Okay, everyone, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It is six o'clock, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Marks.
All right, please stand. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Please remain standing. We have Pastor Greg Quirk, who's going to give us the invocation.
All right, if I could turn this thing on. Good. Mayor, Council, thank you. Let's pray. Well, Father, tonight, we want to continue to thank you for all of this much-needed rain, continue to fill our dams, our reservoirs, and get us out of this drought. We ask, as always, to give wisdom upon our council tonight. I ask that you would bless each one of them and their families this evening as they're away from their families about the business of the community. We also pray for our men and women in law enforcement who have given their lives in the line of duty across this nation just this year alone. We ask that you comfort their families, continue to remind our first responders how appreciated, loved, and supported they are as they venture into harm's way every day for us. So bless this time, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Everyone can sit. Okay, item 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting the Agenda, and followed by roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March 2, at 3:46 p.m. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none. Employee introductions, we have one, right, Chief?
I do. Madam Mayor, members of council and members of the public, I'm happy to introduce our newest police officer, Alexis Garra. Alexis is the oldest of two and comes from a law enforcement family. Her grandfather retired from the Salinas Police Department, and her aunt happens to also be a police officer with us. Graduated from Monterey Peninsula College with honors, she has an AA in criminal justice, and she's looking to eventually obtain her BA. She worked for the Monterey Sheriff's Department for the past two years, and so we stoled her for the Monterey County Assembly. But part of that, she worked for the SPCA for Monterey County as a humane investigator and investigated crimes against animals. In her spare time, she enjoys playing basketball, going to the gym, taking road trips, and particularly down the coast in Monterey County. And she's pretty excited to start her patrol career here in the community and serve the city of Gilroy. Please help me welcome Alexis Garra.
I'm excited to work for the city of Gilroy. Since being here, I've just been welcomed with open arms, and I can't wait to help the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we move on to ceremonial items. I'm going to read a proclamation, and we have someone here who's going to receive it, so I'll just read it first, and then we'll get to the podium. Okay, whereas the city of Gilroy has a long history of helping our neighbors in need, American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help community members. And whereas these heroes help families find shelter after a home fire, they give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients, they deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital, they use their life-saving skills to save someone from a heart attack, drowning, or choking, they enable children around the globe to be vaccinated against measles and rubella. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small, in fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects nearly 40% of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this sixth day of March 2023, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month. Okay? Yeah. Camille McCormick, you're here to accept? Okay. And now we have a presentation by the Community Agency for Resources Advocacy and Services about a Gilroy Youth Center, and this presentation will be approximately 15 minutes, so those of you who are presenting want to come on up. And thank you for being here.
My name's Hazel Quintero, and here is a future establishment of a community or youth center presented by GARRAS. So this is the introduction. My name's Hazel. I'm a 16-year-old youth advocate and intern at GARRAS, and here's Xavier.
Hi, I'm Xavier Garcia. I'm also a youth advocate slash youth mentor. Happy to be here.
So this is our project, and for the further slides, we're going to be explaining to you guys what are we trying to achieve and what are our goals and visions for this project. So for those who don't know, what is a youth center? A youth center is a social and recreational space primarily for kids between the ages of 11 and 18 through a variety of activities. The center promotes youth the opportunity to grow in their physical, social, emotional, and cognitive capacities, as well to experience success, leadership fund, friendship, and recognition.
There we go. How would a youth center help? So in addition to hosting an unstructured social interaction, sorry to steal the thing from you, between various age groups, a youth center may offer educational sessions and secure supervised setting. By offering emotional support, pleasant experiences, social skills, and relationship-building chances, adolescents can also develop assets. Having increased supervision will result in giving kids a sense of security and lessen the likelihood that they will be left unaccompanied with their friends after school. By promoting personal safety and reducing risky behaviors like smoking or drug misuse, staff supervision is focused on developmental connections, can help foster healthy youth development by creating an atmosphere where children can learn and thrive.
So, community readiness. As a result, GARRAS believes in the value of having youth center, our organization was able to canvass the neighborhood to determine whether there is a need for youth center in Gilroy, and over the course of the last nine months, we have obtained over 500 petitions, signatures, and over 130 surveys. It is important to note also that we have had numerous support from community businesses located downtown Gilroy. And up on the screen, it shows a declaration of petition that was stated on top of every single petition paper that people signed.
Youth engagement. So since youth center involves majority youth, GARRAS used enrolled in programs, were able to help canvas for a youth center at some of our local schools, such as Gilroy High School, Christopher High, Brownell. And upon petitioning at those schools, we noticed that a lot of kids, 85% of the youth that signed the petitions, actually didn't even know what a youth center was, so we had to do a little bit of explaining to them what it is and what it does.
So, the preferred location of a youth center? So GARRAS believes that a youth center would be most successful if it were situated someplace on the Gilroy's east side. This is due to the fact that the east side neighborhoods have a larger population density and a higher percentage of at-risk youth than any other section in the city.
We thought it would be a good idea just to list off a few of the apartments located near the San Jose Youth Center or Cultural Center, whatever it goes by now. The following slide lists a few apartment complexes in the east side of Gilroy where the San Jose Youth Center resides. This supposed youth center is not accommodated for the space needed for families in the area with the measurement of 2,090 square feet, around 26 by 80. Mind you, it has a big bathroom, and it takes up a good portion of the space.
So, these are the apartments we got listed off of the city's website, so this sums up of a total, quote-unquote, of 1,212 low-income apartments, and I say, quote-unquote, because we personally went in person, and we went around all of Gilroy, and there is a lot more apartments than they are listed here, and it does not provide a safe space for all the children and youth who live in these complexes.
Just to give you a little bit more insight on the petition surveys that we were doing, we asked the following questions on the survey. So on a scale of 1 to 10, how much do you need a youth center here in Gilroy? Of course, one being the lowest, not at all, 10 being very much needed. Do you think crime rates would go down if a youth center was built? Followed by, do you think a youth center would have a positive influence on kids? And as you can see, 109, so 78%, completely agreed that a youth center is very much needed here in Gilroy, followed by 14% on nine, and then another lower numbers that I won't mention. Do you think crime rates would go down if a youth center was built? And of course, about the same number, 101, 72% completely agree that crime rates would go down, followed by another 14% and 7.9%. The last question, do you think a youth center would have a positive influence on kids? Again, with the 72%, completely agreeing, 10 out of 10, that it will have a positive influence on kids, followed by 19% and 3.6%.
So the following slides here list data from numerous reports that we've received stating that over the course of a couple, like four or five years, Gilroy has maintained in a high spot for duplicated arrests and citations and youth justice. So this one is 2018 on the left, and it's at 273. Obviously, we have a smaller population compared to San Jose's zip codes. And on the right, it's from 2017, and even though we're not in the top three, we're in top four, top five, and with a huge number of 204 duplicated arrests and citations. These ones are from also late 2018, going into 2019. As you can see here, it's 273 arrests compared to San Jose, which is 200, 193. And right here, it's from 2020, although we were in quarantine and COVID hit during the pandemic, there was still a high number of youth arrests. As you can see, the number is 182 for duplicated arrests, and during that time, there was 53 admissions to juvenile hall. Also right here, this is the most recent one from 2021. As you can see on the left picture, the misdemeanor status and infraction count for top 10 zip codes, Gilroy was still number one at 47. Although the picture on the right says it's San Jose, but that's all the zip codes combined. And right here, on the arrest citations geography in 2021, Gilroy has a 51% of felonies and 43% of misdemeanors. And right here, you can see that all the arrests and citations in South County from 2017 to 2021, although they do lower, Gilroy's still the highest in all South County. And on the right, you can see that 66% of all the arrests and citations in 2021 are Latino youth.
Youth center effectiveness. So, community centers have been shown to reduce crime. One 20-year study conducted in 264 cities by New York University showed that in a city with 100,000 residents, every 10 nonprofit reduced the homicide rate by 9%, lowered violent crimes by 6%, and decreased property crime. Now, although Gilroy is around 70%, I feel like a youth center would hold a lot of programs that would help youth, whether it's through leadership programs or mental health programs. I think we can get the same effect.
So there was one study conducted in San Jose, which is a city very close to us, which is called the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, and one project that they did was that they implemented youth centers in every single hotspot of the city. And so it empowered residents from 19 low-income and ethnically diverse neighborhoods to propose and prioritize improvement projects in their neighborhoods. So San Jose invested $104 million to implement more than 75 of the residents' proposed projects. In this 10-year span, the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative opened up the decision-making process to a new group of residents and let them set the agenda and priorities for projects in their neighborhood rather than voting on proposals and originating at the city level. The program designed empowered residents and created an expectation that community members will be actively involved in decisions that would affect their lives and their neighborhoods. The initiative produced a new generation of neighborhood and community leaders, and some went on to become city council members and became part of commissions and citywide task force.
San Jose Strong Initiative, continuing that. For several decades, the city of San Jose grew rapidly outward. During the 1980s and 1990s, the city concentrated on creating new subordinate divisions and downtown high-rise housing to help accommodate the booming population, but between the areas lay 19 older belighted neighborhoods that suffered from high crime rates and aging infrastructures. In the late 1990s, the city of San Jose set out to bring equity in terms of resources and attention to these low-income, ethnically diverse areas. The city launched a Strong Neighborhoods Initiative in partnership with the local redevelopment agencies in 2000s. The initiative was designed to not only revitalize the neighborhoods, but also to engage the people living there.
So the city designed a $100 million of redevelopment funding for the belighted neighborhoods without specific restrictions on how the money would be sent. City leaders followed the three guiding principles for the downtown neighborhood process. So one is to listen to people, recognize that neighbors know more about their neighborhood than you do, two, build on existing strengths and assets, and three, respond to community priorities as part of the process. So that ends with our presentation. We would both like, and GARRAS would like, to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us, and we would further like to discuss on how we can make this project happen, such as putting this project on a bond. Thank you.
We have some of our sources, just in case if anybody wants to check out where we got our information, the Animal Justice Juvenile Report from 2017 up to 2021. I forgot, I think I left out, oh yeah, here's also the San Jose Strong Neighborhoods Initiative empowerment residents, if you guys would like to check it out, free, you're more than able to. I left out one, I forgot to add it, but for the study, the 20-year study that New York University set out, I could send you all the link if you guys would like to check out their data and how they got it. I believe that is all, so thank you very much, council members. I appreciate you all taking out the time to listen to us. That means a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, if you have a question? Sure?
Yeah, I actually had a question. First of all, thank you guys for that presentation. I commend you on your speaking skills, very good. And I appreciate all the detailed information. I mean, I'm sure you put a lot of work into it, and maybe you guys can teach me how to do this PowerPoint presentation, because I just can't do them. In regards to the questions and the results, can we get a copy of those questions?
Yes, we actually do have our surveys saved up and our petitions also saved up, so we can get those to you guys whenever you'd like.
Great. If you didn't send them, I mean, I know I won't want a copy.
Also to add on that, so on top of the three questions from the survey, there's also five questions that are opinionated. Like, they put their own opinion in, we ask the question, and it's their own opinion written, so it's like, not members.
I would love to see those, if possible. Thank you.
Sure, man. Anybody else have any questions before we go sit down? All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, moving on to item 3.2. This is a time on the agenda for anyone who'd like to speak on something not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, I didn't make this announcement before, but I hope everyone's used to me saying it, fill out a speaker card, hand it to the city clerk, and I have something happened by computer, so can you tell me how many speakers there are?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three speaker cards. The first one is Marty Estrada, followed by Araceli Vaqueta, followed by Eugene Bradley.
Okay, thank you.
City Council, Mayor, thank you for allowing our youth to speak. This is all put up by our youth, through our youth, we have a council that puts this together. We did not put this together for them, they did it, so just want to let you know that. I wanted to just share that this youth center that we want built is very important to the city of Gilroy. We would like to see the city council put it on a fast track and put it to the voters. And the way we want to raise funds is using a bond measure, and we need to have a bond measure that's adequate to make sure that this city, I mean, this project is built correctly, like a $30 million bond with an aquatic center. So we want to see a robust youth center here in Gilroy that matches something similar to the one in Morgan Hill. It's an aquatic center, it's a center, and they have all kinds of good stuff in that area. And we want to use this youth center for parents, for youth of all ages. Just to let you know, according to the census of 2020, there was over 16,000 youth under the age of 18 here in the city of Gilroy alone, and so it's very important that we make the attempt and do the process now to start fast-tracking this process so we can see this reality being built. And by doing so, it's going to have your legacy on it, your name's going to be on it. You're going to be the ones, you leaders of this city are going to show that, listen, we took part of this, we took pride in getting a youth center built, because it's so important to our community now, especially now, with the rates that they have put out with statistics about crime and so forth, it's important that we start looking and investing in our youth today. And this is why it's so important that we all do it together. And I know you all have different thoughts and different processes, the way you guys look at things and so forth, it's okay, but together, you guys can make this a reality. I know it's been on the books here at the city to build a youth center for years, decades, but it's not really come to fruition. So we want to make sure that you take considered thought about, how do we process this going forward? How do we do this fast? How can we leverage it and put it to the voters? And then, once the voters say yes, then get a bond to make sure that we can build this properly in the right way. So I thank you, and I appreciate that, and I just want to say kudos to all the youth. You guys are awesome, and they're the ones who put this together, and this coalition of youth, they're looking at other concerns that they have in the city, not just the youth center, but they're looking at other issues that they want to present and make sure that the city is aware that there's other things going on in the city relating to youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. It's me again, Araceli Vaqueta, and on time this time. The very first time I stood before you was on August 1, 2022. I came up here and began to speak not knowing what to say, afraid to be standing in front of a large group, but knowing that I had to say something because of my life, the lives of my children. My neighbors and my immediate community were being negatively impacted by the activities occurring inside the parking lot of Las Animas Veterans Park on Hannah and Arnold Drive. If you recall, I was pleading for help but did not know how to ask or who to ask. I was scared for my children's safety, I was also very tired, given I was getting woken up on average four nights a week, to fights, loud music, cars racing in and out of the parking lot, fireworks, individuals congregating after hours, and other excessive noise. And truthfully, I was feeling bad for contacting the Gilroy Police Department so often, knowing they have an entire city who needs them to respond to emergencies and other incidents. Two weeks later, on August 15, 2022, I came back still unsure of what to say or who to ask, but determined because I knew my children, my neighbors, and my community could not continue to live like this. The activities occurring were deeply impacting our sleep, our sense of safety and security, our mental health, and our overall quality of life. I also came to you looking for solutions and offering solutions. I proposed a gate, lights, a camera, and additional signs stating no overnight parking was allowed. While I am happy to report, the gate is now up, and it is being locked at night, and I want you all to know this, and I'm just extremely grateful for that. I want to thank wholeheartedly Mr. Jimmy Forbes, our city manager, for joining me and executing those solutions. I want to thank you, Mayor, and every city council member for picking up the phone and calling me, for returning my emails. Thank you so much for doing that. It truly means the world to me. I want to thank the Gilroy Police Department for your positive response, especially Chief Espinoza, Captain Smith, who's not here, Sergeant Razzo, and the rest of the police force. I also want to acknowledge Deputy Public Works Director, Mr. Matt Jones, Public Works Director, Darryl Jordan, Recreation Manager, Adam Henig, for, it takes a community, it took all of you. Again, thank you. It couldn't have happened if you wouldn't have been willing to listen to me and hearing my concerns, and thank you for what you do, and that's all I wanted to say today, and just acknowledge each and every one of you, Mr. Forbes, especially you, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Evening, council members, Madam Mayor and Gilroians. My name is Eugene Bradley. I am the founder and CEO of the Silicon Valley Transit Users Way Public Transit Advocacy and Watchdog Group. Couple of quick things, one with the youth center. Since one's being proposed, the only thing that I would ask, that I would hope to see is that this new youth center be built on or near a VTA bus line. It does no good for Gilroy youth to be forced to ask their parents to drive them to a youth center like I see in some other places, and the obvious climate change, we don't want youth further contributing to that. Second thing, and the other reason why I'm here, I've heard frustration from Mayor Blankley last Thursday at the VTA boarding when she exasperated, and I can sense this, I can sense this even over a computer, I'm a computer guy. I sensed a lot of frustration with the fact that a lot of the public transit here down in South County, it's basically just crumbs compared to San Jose. My group and I are more than willing to work with you, as well as Councilmember Hilton, to help get the public transit, especially in South County, better than it needs to be. I say this as somebody that currently has been priced out, unfortunately, and now currently live in Monterey County. Were it not for the fact that transit agency down there, MST, didn't stop all sort of out of Monterey County, I would have taken the 55 bus up here tonight. Unfortunately, I had to drive and risk getting myself in an accident on 101 to get here just to deliver this message and offer my group's help to you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Councilmember. So I will leave my contact information. Let's get to work, we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment on item 3.2, and we move on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
That's the report.
Councilmember Armendaris.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start by recognizing March as International Women's History Month, and as such, I will be hosting a panel discussion this Saturday on modern struggles of women from around the world at 11:00 a.m. at the Gilroy Library. And per my committees, there were no meetings this month of my committees since the last council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
I have no report, but I do have a correction. Last week, I said that Gilroy Gardens was opening to the public on May 25. That's incorrect. It is March 25. March, couple of weeks. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, in June of 2022, the Board of Directors allocated 1.5 million for two grant programs, the decarbonization engagement grants and the decarbonization demonstration grants. The grants offer financial support from member agency activities that promote electric technology education and electric upgrades at community buildings. After receiving strong proposals for projects that would benefit the community, the board voted to allocate an additional 2 million, bringing the total to 3.5 million in grants to ensure that all proposed projects proceed. Between the two available grants, nine Silicon Valley Clean Energy member agencies will receive funding. The 2022 Community Impact Report for our community highlighting annual results such as customer savings, emission reduction, net energy metering payments, and more has been published. In 2022, SVE customers received on-bill savings of 6.4 million, bringing the total customer savings since the agency launched in 2017 to nearly $90 million. Last year, our region avoided over 303 million pounds of greenhouse gases by choosing clean electricity provided by SVE, our local electricity provider. The impact reports are custom to each member agency, and SVE shared these directly with council and city managers via email. The reports can also be found on the SVE Community Impact website. SVE recognizes emissions reduction efforts by all 13 member communities. During the 2022 Building Code cycle, all Silicon Valley Clean Energy member agencies voted to adopt reach codes requiring varying degree of electric readiness or all-electric requirements for new construction and electric vehicle charging. The actions taken by our community will have a lasting impact as new homes and buildings The actions taken by our community will have a lasting impact as new homes and buildings are part of a healthier, pollution-free region. This effort is not just local, but part of the state and national movement to meet our clean energy and clean air goals by utilizing clean electricity to power buildings and transportation and reduce dependency on fossil fuels. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
I have no reports.
Councilmember Tovar.
No report, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, good. Mine is another doozy. So I wanted to report out that, yeah, at the Caltrain Board Meeting, we got somewhat success. We got, in the resolution, the board put that the MOU with TAMC, the Monterey County Transportation, in the resolution that it would not jeopardize the fourth train to Gilroy, which was all we could do. We all want service to Salinas as well. Of course, train service is, is good everywhere, but Gilroy's been waiting an awful long time for that fourth train. VTA Board, there was a board meeting and a workshop and a governance and audit committee meeting as well. So it was a very, very busy week for me. And yes, it's a constant struggle to push for service to South County. We are at the very bottom of, of the end of service, but I will tell you that VTA overall, even by their own admission, underserves compared to their peer agencies. So it's, it's a problem, and yet expenses far exceed, far exceed revenue, another big problem, and that was the subject of the workshop and VTA's fiscal cliff, not dissimilar to what we're going to be hearing with City Two with unfunded liabilities and of the such. So it's, it's a serious thing. Lastly, I do want to share that, this is some good news. Digital Nest and Youth Alliance have applied for a grant to help them purchase a building downtown where they are going to operate a youth center. And so I was asked to write a letter of support to Senator Padilla for that grant. I did so. I think it's very positive. They're going to call it the Gilroy Youth Impact Center, and it's, they're calling it Cradle to Career, are the services they're going to, they're going to host there. And it is, it is, it'll be very good for Gilroy if they get that grant so that they can actually have the space. Right now, they're renting the space. They're in the same space, and they're leasing it, but they would like to own it. Okay, that concludes my report. So that brings us to council correspondence. We have our city council attendants. And also in the packet, I want to point out for the public, is the support letter for the city of Gilroy's 10th Street Bridge application. And on that note, we got some really good news today, too, that Senator Padilla himself, our U.S. Senator, wrote a letter of support to the Secretary of the Department of Transportation on that grant. So we are, we're looking good, folks, looking as good as we can, at least right now. Okay? Future council-initiated items?
I have two, Mayor.
Okay.
Ready? I'd like to propose that we adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. It will be celebrated across our region and state by government and nonprofit organizations. This will highlight one of our council goals, a shared goal of our Arts and Culture Commission, the Arts Roundtable, and SVE Creates. It'll also show the region that we recognize the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone, while recognizing that arts and creativity support student's success of lifelong learning, provide job skills, and bring joy to community while strengthening our connections. I have sample language to pass along to the city clerk, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Thank you. Okay, so that's from the email that we all got. I actually replied to the two people who sent that to us, and, sorry? And I was hoping to wait to hear back from them to do a proclamation. If it is the wish of this council to do a resolution, then that is what Councilmember Hilton is asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Cool.
Okay, so the wording for that, you're going to submit to the city, the suggested wording will go to city clerk, and we'll take it from there.
Correct.
Okay, and then we'll just bring it back to the, to a meeting that we can before April.
Yeah, I have another one. I'd like to propose that we adopt a resolution proclaiming the last two weeks of April as High School Voter Education Weeks. The California Education Code designates the last two full weeks in April and September to be High School Voter Education Weeks. It will show that we are committed to strengthening our democracy by encouraging early voter registration and increasing participation in all elections. I also have sample language to pass along to that to the city clerk, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Have you ran this by anyone at the school district to see how they want to handle it?
Yeah, I've also, I've also contacted one of their board members as well.
Well, that, I don't think that's what you're asking.
No, I mean, we can't just do something high school without them being a partner in it.
Well, no, this is, this is something coming for, from us for voter education. It just happens to be something that they promote within the high schools. But this is not, this is not any, this is not telling the school district to do anything in particular, no.
I know that they invited, they've invited us, too, to do.
Well, and Senator Padilla was actually, when he was Secretary of State, hosted something, too. It's, it's, it's just, it's a sentiment from the city showing that, that we support it, and, and, yeah, I do look forward to them working with us as well.
So I appreciate the sentiment. I am not supporting it just because I, I am uncomfortable just throwing things out there. We're, we're in the process of getting a handle around proclamations as it is, trying to come up with a policy, because otherwise, everything seems like a good idea. So that, that is just my opinion. The rest of the council needs to, resolutions are something that.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable going into the school district's territory, so to speak, because this should be coming from their civics teachers, their history teachers, and I certainly would support it, but I don't think we should be the body that tells them what they're going to be doing.
This is, a resolution does not tell anybody what to do.
I just don't even want the resolution. I think that needs to come from them.
Okay, so can we just do a thumbs, thumbs up for those who would like to do this, so I can see if there's a majority? I'm looking at three. Okay, so that one fails.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but the first one, we'll, we'll come back. All right, consent calendar. Item 7.2 needs to be pulled because it's no longer applicable. That project is, is going through. So under consent is only 7.1, which is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. But before anybody makes a motion, I need to ask for public comment.
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment and asking for a motion on 7.1.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Councilmember Armendaras.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, that passed unanimously. That brings us to 8.1, bids and proposals. Award a contract to McKim Corporation for the fiscal year 23 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project, number 23PW279, and approve a project expenditure of $271,205. And Darryl Jordan, Public Works Director, is giving us this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have the CDB, our annual CDBG project to bring forward to the council. As you may know, the city receives community development block grant money annually from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we call HUD for short, to use with low and moderate income housing neighborhoods throughout our community. City Council approved CDBG allocations of over $70,000 for fiscal year 2022 and additional $145,000 for fiscal year 23. Staff also identified unspent prior-year resources from CDBG to utilize the resources that we have, already have. The project will upgrade existing curb ramps to be ADA compliant along streets planned for our new pavement rehabilitation project of 23. Project allows more money to be spent on paving instead of curb ramps. This map here just gives you an idea where those ramps will go in throughout the city. I'm sure you're familiar with these areas. The bid process, so we advertised in the San Jose Mercury News and city website, February 3rd, 2023, for our procurement process. Bids were open on February 23rd. Staff received only two bids. The lowest responsive bidder was McKim Corporation, a local company. The project costs turned out to be $246,000, contingency an extra $24,000, 10%, with a total bid plus contingency of $271,205. Again, the funding resources are CDBG funds. Public outreach, during the project, the contractor will notify nearby residents two weeks and 48 hours in advance of construction to try to avoid any issues with the getting back and forth from their houses or what's going on during that day, so they know there will be some delays perhaps and not to park in certain areas. Project information will also be sent out on various social media apps that we have, Facebook, Nextdoor, Email Express. So tonight, we're recommend, recommending that you award a contract to McKim Corporation in the amount of $246,550 with an additional project contingency of $24,655 for a total construction cost of $271,205 for the fiscal year 23 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project, number 23 Public Works 279, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, Darryl, when I was looking at the list of the locations.
Yeah.
I noticed there's nothing in the east side of Gilroy. Is there some reason for that?
The reasons that these particular ones were chosen is they correlate with the pavement project that's going to go on this next year, so we can get ahead of the pavement going in.
Oh, okay.
Because we're supposed to upgrade any ramp when we do a street project. So this way, we're kind of getting ahead of that, so they coincide with each other.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Klein.
The 10%.
Yeah.
Is that standard?
It is, it is standard, yeah.
Pretty much, okay.
It's always there.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure. That's for those unforeseen issues that always come up with construction, as you know.
Yeah, I can, if I, I can respond. What you need for the contingency, the 10 or 15% contingency, you needed in the staff report and in the motion, that you have given that direction so we can pay it. So we really do need it in that, in the staff report.
So we can pay it if we need it, but we always seem to need it.
I just, um.
Oh, Councilmember Armendaras?
Yeah, sorry. I don't know how to put my hand up from this screen, but, no, I appreciate this service going into this neighborhood. I have some older and disabled family members and friends in this neighborhood, and I think it's much appreciated. I know it wasn't any strategic, right, in, in terms of the demographics of the neighborhood, but, but I do think it's much needed, and there's some, like at Broadway and Hannah, there's some really deep, badly needed improvement, pavement improvements there. So it'll make it easier for our older and disabled, you know, residents, and then I'm all for it. So thank you.
And to answer that, too, as well as Mr. Bracco, there'll be another project coming through for our citywide curb ramps is coming soon, probably next month you'll be seeing that, which the east side will have some projects on there, too.
Councilmember Tovar, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Darryl, thank you for this, and I, I'm glad that we have a company from Gilroy that's sort of in, for this project here. But looking at the other company, it's roughly about $100,000 difference.
Yeah.
Why, why is that? For a project, I mean, it's, it's not a very large project, but still, it's a huge difference in numbers there.
Typically, what we see on a large deviation like this is a company has its own employees rather than staffing from outside sources and bringing them in to help cover the project. So if it's their own employees, they can pay, the cost, the overhead's a little bit less, so.
Again, thank you.
Okay, do we have any members of the pub, this is something that goes to the public, does it not?
Yes, Madam Mayor. And I do not have any speaker cards on this.
Okay, then, closing public comment.
Darryl, could you, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
It's too thin.
I'm sorry, another question?
I just want to follow up on his last comment. Regarding the, the overhead and the employees, could you repeat what your answer was to Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, if you have a company that has its own employees versus a company that has to outsource subconsultants or sub-employees, bring them in, there's usually a higher overhead if you have to bring outside sources in to do your project. Or they come from a zone, or the employees come from an area with a larger cost of living, perhaps, and they have to pay their wages higher. But if they're here in town, we're able to capture that, that savings with, with employees from local.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so looking for a motion, if anybody would like to.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armendaras. Would you like me to read it, Ty, or do you want to?
Yes, we're at a record.
Okay. Motion to award a contract to McKim Corporation in the amount of $246,550 for the construction of the fiscal year 23 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project, number 23PW279, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents, and approve a contingency amount of $24,655 to be expended only with approved change orders for a maximum project expenditure of $271,205.
Councilmember Armendaras.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, 9.1, public hearings. Architectural and site review permit to amend the Plaza Alium sign program located, this is site specific, by the way, everybody, located on property at the northeast corner of 10th Street and Chestnut Street, application number AS2224. I'm going to start by asking council members if they have any expertise communications to disclose.
None.
No.
Okay, seeing none. I was going to say Sharon, but Craig, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Through a little curve tonight. So thank you for introducing the item. As you mentioned, this is a request for an architectural and site review permit amendment. This is the project Alium, which came in as the Evergreen Development a year, two years ago, reviewed by the council, approved for a commercial shopping center. In that approval, it included a sign program, and the applicant has been working on getting their permits and moving forward with the project and doing some further studies, investigations of the site. And as they've done that, they did an analysis of how the sign that they've gotten approved for at 75 feet would look and appear. What they discovered is that the sign location and height, the entire panel they proposed would not be visible, so they wanted to shorten that panel. In, in doing so, get an additional five feet so that the panel would be more visible. So what we have a proposal of is to go five feet taller, but reduce the sign face to a more compact scale. And so this image in your packet shows you essentially what that would look like visually. We think it visually stands out to be still a fine design, matches the original proposal. The planning commission took a look at the materials and recommended its approval unanimously. They felt it was a good solution. The program complies with our general plan. We have policies that speak to signage, requiring that it be well-integrated and compatible to surrounding context. We believe the site remains so. The findings for approval and the criteria for approval for the original approval still stand with this minor change. And there was an environmental document adopted for the project that still covers the impacts that would be experienced by a five-foot change in the height, which is very insignificant. So with that, we're recommending that you acknowledge that the prior sequoia document has satisfied, has covered, covers this amendment and adopt a resolution to approve the sign program amendment as indicated in the, in the materials. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, the applicant is here as well, if you'd like to hear from them on, on this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Craig. Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
All right, Craig, could you go back to the visual analysis slide? I just have, I'm just curious. See the McDonald's sign there?
Yes.
It looks, it looks like it's higher than the proposed Evergreen sign. Is that, is that just the angle that I'm looking at?
Yeah, it's just, it's in the foreground. So the Evergreen sign is going to be set back. I don't have in my slide presentation the show, the visual that shows the off-ramp, but the Evergreen side is, is quite a ways back from the freeway, whereas the McDonald's sign is right on the freeway.
So is the McDonald's sign taller?
No.
No.
It's five feet shorter.
It's actually a little bit shorter?
Yeah, it's between 60 and 75, I don't recall just that size, height, but it's, it's Yeah, it's between 60 and 75, I don't recall just that site height, but it's shorter.
I thought the report, whoever did all these things, whether it was the applicant or not, really made it at least easy for me to understand the distance and how it compared to everything that's out there and what this would look like, including going to Caltrans to see if Caltrans could trim the trees back. And there was very limited ability to do that because the trees are healthy, and you don't want to take down healthy trees. So, anyway, I'm very appreciative of the report. I thought it made it quite easy to understand. Councilmember Tovar, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, then this is, thank you, Craig. This is a public hearing, so I need to open it and state the time, 6:49 PM.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing at 6:49 PM. Looking to council for possible action.
I'll move.
I'll second. Go ahead, Carol.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, so it was moved by Councilmember Barco and seconded by Councilmember Marks, and it is, this is what you are motioning and seconding. Motion to determine pursuant to SEQUA guidelines, section 15162, that the proposed amendment to the approved sign program is adequately assessed by the mitigated negative declaration SCH number 2021060521, and that no subsequent, sorry, adopted for the commercial development project on September 20th, 2021, and that no subsequent environmental review shall be required based on its independent analysis and adopt a resolution to approve the proposed sign program amendment AS 2224. Okay, so that's the motion and the second, and we're ready for...
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenkley.
Yes, that also passes unanimously. All right, unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of new business, 11.1, approval of the updated City of Gilroy purchasing policy. And Harjo is going to give us this report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Here's Joe Sangha, City's Finance Director. The item before you is the approval of the updated City of Gilroy purchasing policy. Some background, the current existing policy was established and approved by the City Council back in March of 2020. In June of 2022, the City Council adopted a resolution to submit a measure to amend certain city charter sections to be placed on the November 2022 election ballot. In December of 2022, the election results were certified, including the passage of the measure, which was known as Measure D, amending the certain city charter sections. The four charter amendments included, one, the first one was increasing the formal bidding threshold for public projects from $35,000, which was the amount referenced in the charter to be consistent with the California Public Contract Code. Second was adding best value contracting as a procurement option for public projects. Third, adding design-build contracting as a procurement option for public projects. And last but not least was modernization of the public noticing and bid solicitation rules and requirements that were outlined in the charter. Essentially, these amendments were to make the city's charter consistent with the state California Public Contract Code. Specifically for number one, the policy sections updated are referenced there, there's four sections. The Public Contract Code for public projects procurement allows for projects to be informally bid and procured up to $200,000. And formally, anything above $200,000 should be formally bid out. And the language in the charter does peg it to the Public Contract Code, so if the contract code language section gets updated or the amounts change, you know, we would be subject to those new dollar amounts, and we would, of course, notify the council that, you know, if and anytime that does occur as an information item. And the City Council, one clarified comment here to make is the City Council's current award authority is $100,000. So although some of these public works projects can be bid out informally, the council is still going to be approving anything $100,000 or above. So I just want to make sure that's clarified. The second item is adding the best value contracting as a procurement. Two sections were updated. The existing formal bidding procedure requires selecting public work project contractor-based exclusively on lowest bid, responsive and responsible bidder, which is also the lowest price. The best value contracting allows selecting contractors on criteria other than just the price. Essentially, its addition qualifications and experience are taken into account. The third item is adding the design-build contracting as allowed by the Public Contract Code. Specific for Gilroy, we're adding the design-build contracting as an option for public projects equal to or in excess of $1 million. Two sections were updated. The existing procurement does require separate processes for these two general phases of public projects. Typically, design is bid out separately than the actual construction. The design-build allows the design and the construction to be bid and procured from a single entity, thereby streamlining the process and creating efficiencies. The, only for projects that, again, this is subject only for projects equal to or in excess of $1 million, provided that it follows the competitive selection process that's consistent with the state code. So just want to clarify that. The last but not least for the charter amendment was the modernization. Two sections were updated here. The existing language requires public project bids to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. We have expanded this provision to allow for electronic publications or publications in trade journals and/or usage of list of qualified contractors as additional options. We also use this opportunity to make some other administrative clarification types of changes and also are recommending to increase the staff level of award authority from the current 2,999 to 4,999. This is essentially to, as we're seeing a lot of purchase orders and procurements are starting to, you know, dip into the above $3,000 mark, and we believe the next appropriate mark is the 5,000, just given where the costs have increased recently. This does allow us to streamline the process, but also requires, it doesn't, you know, stop our staff from procuring and getting the best value, so they're still encouraged to price shop and get three quotes and all, you know, meet the existing requirements of the policy, if you will. The administrative and clarification type changes are just updating the definitions. The local preference percentage was inconsistent in the document. There were 3% references, 5% references. And looking at the council's intent in March of 2020, I believe it was 5%, so we're just clarifying that. We're omitting a section which is no longer relevant, which is central supplies. It's everything decentralized, departments are ordering their own supplies at each of the facilities. Additionally, we're clarifying language for prevailing wages and just making sure all contracts require the language in the contracts. And then, last but not least, just references throughout the policy document to other sections or pages as these additional items were added, we're updating those. The recommendation before you is to approve the updated City of Gilroy purchasing policy, which again primarily consists of the charter amendments that are voter-approved, and then the couple items I talked about, the administrative. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Harjo. All right, council? No public comment, anything?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
No public comment? Is that a...
Discussion.
Oh, oh, now a question, okay.
Thank you. So, under section seven, the specials policies and programs, it's kind of a spot where, you know, we can put in our local preference, 5%, which you would refer to as like all of us working grants on. Thank you, Councilmember Tovar, for always pushing that and continuing to push that. You know, in other stuff, there's like, we have a minority disabled and women-owned business policy statement, environmental-friendly product purchases, you know, as we're going on. I did a, we already have a reference to the California Department of Industrial Relations under prevailing wage contracts. That's also the agency that oversees wage theft claims. I happened to do a public records request with that agency to see how many wage theft claims happened, businesses out of Gilroy, in a 10-year span from 2011 to 2021, there was 957. I found that was pretty high. And I know that that's a statewide problem. So what I would like to see is if there's support from staff and council in adding a section under section seven regarding wage theft. And it could be something very simple, simple things that we already do right here. Having a policy statement under section seven regarding wage theft would further enhance our commitment to responsible contractors and protection of our workers, right? By requiring an additional completed and signed form required of the project owner, contractor, and subcontractor that certifies compliance with the wage theft protection laws, and that there are no unpaid wage theft judgments against that company. Kind of like the same thing where they say, yes, I do have, you know, insurance for my employees, yes, I do have the liability coverage, but I'm looking to try to see if there's any support to add that.
Jimmy, do you want to? Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Daryl Jordan, to hopefully answer a question that I have. I believe that we are required, and this is a change in the law a few years ago, to verify that there are no wage claims against a contractor, but I'll ask Daryl if he knows more about that.
That's correct, Jimmy. Our contractors are required to provide a certified payroll, that which we report to the state, and that which we verify too. And we actually do go out and do spot investigations and asking people to make sure they're getting paid the right, correct wages, so.
That's wonderful. Is there a way that we can memorialize that so the general public and others understand that, just a simple language of adding it on there?
Yeah, I think it's typically added into the bid document as a, it's a requirement of the documents that are put out. So I think, you know, the policy is a large, broad document, you know, perhaps what we ensure is that every bid that goes out includes that certification, and for public work projects, it definitely, definitely does.
I think we gotta, we do need to clarify. Hang on, okay. Are you finished, Harjo? Sorry, finish speaking. And Councilmember Hilton, are you finished speaking?
For the moment, yeah. I like, but I enjoy this conversation. It's a good one that needs to be had.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras?
Thank you. And if Ty could show me, I don't know where to put my hand up with this thing.
It's okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I think we need to clarify and distinguish the difference between a wage theft claim and an outstanding judgment, right? So, and we want to make sure that both are included if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if it's already included in the law or if it's something we're going to include in further language. And, you know, given the impact on, not just individual workers, but also on the economy, right, where they, in the community where they live, I think it's really important. And I know that in our county, outstanding wage theft judgments were in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So that's, it's a huge impact on our community and our workers. But again, we have to specify that it includes outstanding wage theft judgments. Thank you.
Alls I can tell you is that every project must file with the state. Every public works project files with them, and we track them. They track them, we track them both, so there's a balance of power there, so.
Okay, Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Armendaras. I would like to offer up a suggestion, if it's at the pleasure of council, that if you're, if you're going to approve this current purchasing policy update, we would return with the language, because I want to know more about what we're doing. And we could actually just make that amendment in a consent calendar or something like that that just says, after doing our own research, we see this in other contracts, we understand what it means, and that we recommend that council add this to the purchasing policy, but give us a chance to just make sure we understand all the facets to it.
Thank you. I wanted to say that we don't, we might be prohibited from duplicating the state law in this area, so we will have to check. Because, you know, we're a charter city, and we have some flexibility, but after SB 7, we've, we're now bound by certain laws, so we would probably need to look at it in the attorney's office.
Yeah, and I think my original suggestion was not to have any, like, anything big and formal, more or less like, we talk about prevailing wage in here, even though we all know the prevailing wage isn't the law, it's still written in here as a, so, you know, as a paragraph, right? It doesn't have to necessarily refer to a law, but it can, it can let the public know and let, I didn't know that we did that, right? It would let electeds know that this is something that we value and that should be in there. So, thank you for that pass for.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? No. Okay, so is someone wanting to make a motion, or?
Yeah, I can, I can do that if you want.
I'll second.
Well, he has, but he's going to make a motion with things. So, okay. So if you want a second, it's still, that's fine, but let him make his motion first, okay?
So the motion would be to accept, you know, accept the staff report on the updated City of Gilroy purchasing policy, and then with the amendment of adding a section on wage theft. And I'll be, I'll be specific on what the language that I would be looking for to see if that will help staff as well to bring that back. So the policy statement would be under, or let's just say, statement will be under section seven regarding wage theft, and it would require an additional, additional completed and signed form required of the project owner, contractor, and subcontractors that certifies compliance with wage theft protection laws, and that there are no unpaid wage theft judgments.
Okay, that's the motion. Councilmember Klein, are you wanting to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, it is seconded, and for my own clarity, that in, what he just said is what is already covered according to our Public Works Director, right? I understand it isn't of the language that Councilmember Hilton is asking for, but it is already covered, that we would be made aware of any outstanding wage theft judgments, correct? Okay. Okay, so...
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blenkley?
No. All right, and that passes? 6.1. Okay, 11.2, update on the status of council and departmental work plans.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. We were not going to let you have an hour-long council meeting, so we decided to shorten your workshop of the 13th by including this topic that we would have done next week instead, so we're trying to balance out your meetings a little bit. But this is, in essence, a continuation of the strategic planning session we had in January, and we had a lengthy discussion about the current work plan and work plan items, and so we took a lot of the feedback that we received from council, and we've updated everything, and so I really wanted to take an opportunity tonight to discuss the work plan, but enable you to talk to each department head in their department as they go through their departmental work plans. You can ask questions, please, you know, feel free. We're kind of going into a workshop mode here for about the next hour or so, or however long it takes us to get through this agenda item. And so with that, I'll go ahead and start off how this works into the budget process and how this gets us, the staff, getting ready to develop the recommended budget that we'll bring to you in April. The legislative agenda and department work plans were adopted as part of the budget process almost two years ago, and you receive periodic updates on the city's work plan. You did receive one back in January, and, which we did discuss at that time, the next work plan items for the next two years. Some of the feedback we received from council is that they like to see some timelines in with the update and also some clarification of project status. We spent a considerable amount of time clarifying project status, and to give you an example, two years ago, council approved replacement of all the fire hydrants in town. That's a 10-year project, so that's going to be in progress for the next, you know, seven years. And I know the question was, what does in progress even mean? So we did some refinement there to try to, you know, to let you know that even though it's not completed, it's not due to anything, it's just a long-term project. And so we attempted to make some improvements to the work plan update. This will feed in directly into your study session of next Monday, and what we will do at that time is we'll give you an update to the five-year financial report, which we do have some updates, and we have some things we need to discuss with you about our finances. And then we will finish discussing the fiscal year '22 and '23 work plans. There's a point where we stop with what we've been doing the last two years, and we're going to carry forward those unfinished things into the next work plan, assuming that staff makes that recommendation depending on the work plan item. And then we also had 12 items that council discussed at January 28th, and we'll have time set aside next Monday to discuss those 12 as well. And then we will also add to that the departmental needs of work plan items that they have to do. And so, you know, we've talked before about just mandatory, required, core discretionary, and for some of our departments, they have work plan items in the next two years that they have no choice but to do because of just mandates of the state or what have you. So that's how the whole work plan will get put together, and that's how we'll make recommendations to council about where we allocate our resources. Council listed 12 items, and I'm just going to read these back to you, and you're welcome to discuss these if you'd like, but I'm just recapping that. Sheltering and supporting residents in adverse weather or other emergency situations. Regular reports on grants and other projects. Enhanced timeframe descriptions in the updates for existing projects. Budgeting the next two years of street funding. Planning for a community youth center. Following Resolution 22-16-IRS Section 115 trust savings allocation policy. Downtown parklets. The Gilroy outlets, exploring alternative funding streams for sales tax revenues. Services to homeless, explore additional funding, more robust services, look at tiny homes and other options. AB 2234, which relates to building permits. Transit-first policy. Reviewing the ADU ordinance, new state laws as well, pre-approved plans with 1,000-square-foot barrier for ADUs. And then the transportation demand management policy. Those were the 12 items that council brought up. And as we go through the work plan, you'll see some that were actually in some ways in the city's current work plan, maybe not as specific or as detailed as you have up here, but that's the 12 that council started with on the 20th of January. Okay, so since the 20th of January, we've updated the work plan, and we've completed 13 more items on the list of 146, and we've also added timeframes, which calendar year and quarter format. And then we added pending, consolidated, and removed. And we had to consolidate some of the work plan items because they were located in the legislative agenda, they were on an ad hoc committee agenda as well, and they were also on the departmental work plan. So we con-doubt, consolidated those all into one. And then we, we actually removed a few as well, which we'll show you on, on the presentation where we removed them and why we removed them. And so we also pulled out the ad hoc committee recommendations for downtown because indication from council in January is that they wanted to continue some form of a downtown committee. And so we will leave those work plan items to the committee itself and take those out of the departments per se. So, one hundred and twenty-four items to one forty-six. Okay, so revised initial number of items are one hundred and forty-six, and we've completed about forty-five percent of those. I will caution you not to get too caught up in the data for reasons being, again, ten years it takes to complete a project doesn't really mean you're not doing it or you haven't gotten anywhere. So we're not data-driven so much, so much on the percentage, but it does tell you that a lot of things did get done on the work plan, and there's still some remaining items. You know, fifty-nine at this point. And of the fifty-nine, we expect sixty-eight percent of those will be completed in the next twelve months. So, you know, approximately ten to fifteen, maybe twenty will be left after the end of next year. And so that's where the other additional items that council has brought up or departments are asking, are being required to do, will, will fill in the rest of, of what we have for the next two years. But most of these items will be done by the fourth quarter of next year. Council legislative agenda. If you recall, when you adopted the budget two years ago, you had sixteen items in which council, you added several more during the, the process of the last two years. And so we, we've tried to keep up on that, but we, it certainly has been a lot, lot on our table. Some of the work plan items that you had back in, two years ago was the in lieu fees versus allocations. I'm not gonna read all the notes and everything, I'm gonna glance over them real fast, so just give me a, a stop when you want to stop or talk about something or ask a question. But if not, I'll just keep, I'll keep going until you, you slow me down. In lieu fees, allocations, downtown rule twenty undergrounding, and then the downtown specific plan. We also had the parking management plan, which is in process right now. We just concluded some of the public outreach meetings, and we'll be compiling input from downtown property owners. And then downtown parklets is awaiting the finishing of the downtown parking management study, because before we remove parking spots for parklets, we want to make sure that we understand all the parking is going towards and what it's best used for. Sometimes it's not best used for a parklet. Climate action, bin mark, benchmarks. That is a mandated item that we have on our timeframe, and we are seeking grant funding, but we may at some point come to council and ask for the funding out of our reserves, which we have more than our minimum, because we're kind of finding on some of these items, we're just waiting around for grant funding, and it may never come. So we, we'll get moving on some of those. Economic incentives, job protections. The council adoption, adopted two incentive programs for the downtown committee, and then we will return in, to council in April regarding, regarding some job protection policies that were part of your original legislative agenda. Public safety, mental health response team. This actually comes up a few times, and that one is, been a bit of a challenge due to the lack of a permanent option in South County for psychiatric emergency response services, for addiction services, and, and talking with various council members, including some of our elected officials in the county. We are definitely pushing on the opportunity to increase those services through the county health system, as we do have a hospital here. And I'm gonna say we haven't gotten very far, but we have had some preliminary conversations and look to continue to do that. Until that is in place, it really makes it difficult for the public safety entities to have a public health, mental health response team due to nowhere to take folks once you've, you know, you've engaged them, so.
Can I say something real quick? I was watching the county board, county board supervisors' budget, mid-year budget, and they had mentioned that St. Louis was actually gonna be getting the level-three trauma center, expanding the ER, and hiring more full-time staff versus contractors. So at least that's a direction forward. Thank you.
And then access to technology, will we return in council, and safe parking policy. We've done considerable work on this. We have yet to identify a, a location and a vendor that fits our budget, but we still have it on our work plan to continue and complete. Okay, so we'll talk real quick about the downtown committee items. We separated these out, like I said, because council gave indication that they were looking to continue that committee. So we'll give you an update on some of those items that we pulled out of the departmental work plan and now their, their work plan items of the downtown committee. Update, update the downtown strategic plan. This will be initiated in the first quarter of fiscal twenty-four if council decides to fund it. Some of these items were, again, listed as grant needed. And so when we do return to you with the budget in April, we will have a list of items, one-time items that we would like you to consider. And there's a high probability that that one will be on there too, especially once we find out the cost of what that will, will take. New ordinances to address vacancies and noise. We will be bringing the initial review of the existing ordinance about vacant properties. We'll also see if the ordinance is still in effect and, because it did have a sunset provision, again, just bringing that item to council and determining the legality of vacancy ordinances as well. So it's, it is a very tricky legal issue. And then we'll be reviewing downtown noise ordinances in the region to better, you know, to put together better practices, and we'll come back for that in the third quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Okay? Number three, downtown committee recommendation, pursue opportunities for assessment district. We have completed, or almost completed with the feasibility study, and we have held a meeting with participating property owners in February. And the next step is really for the property owners to petition for ballot measure to place the assessment district, to a vote of those property owners. So that is now on the downtown property owners. Parking management, council approved a consultant contract for two hundred and seventy-three thousand. That work is underway. We are compiling input from downtown property owners, surrounding areas, and the Gilroy public at large to provide feedback for the overall parking analysis. Once we finish that, then we'll be able to address the parklets as well. And then a downtown pop-up park. We have been discussing that with the, the Gilroy Downtown Business Association, as they've shown interest to, to put in a stage in the, in the area that we had considered, and they have thoughts and ideas. So we will be bringing that to council in May for confirmation of a design concept, a, a project budget, and then a timeframe, so, within the next couple of months. And then develop beautification and decorative lighting improvements. Not too long ago, council approved a hundred thousand dollars for downtown beautification. In my discussions with GDBA and with many others as well, it was pretty simple, people want lights. And so we will be pruning the trees downtown as soon as it stops raining, and then the lights will go from the trunk all the way up through the, the rest of the tree, because right now they stop kind of about a third of the way up. So lights is, seems to be at the top of everybody's priority list and a pretty, pretty simple job in general.
From what, from what street to what street will those go on?
I think we did fourth to seventh, to seventh?
I have a question. So what kind of outside partnerships can we have, maybe with like planting trees in areas that we're not gonna focus on the lighting, but that are, there's space provided? Like, I'm talking about like specifically from like first through third, where there's not a very good tree canopy right now, but working with maybe R-City Forest or someone else to actually put in trees? So that way in the future, maybe five, ten years from now, when we're not here, there might be a more, better of a tree canopy, more growth, and maybe, maybe they can put the same type of lighting that we're thinking about, you know, back and forth on there. So I don't know if we're still working with R-City Forest, or if there's even a possibility to think about.
Yeah, and we've worked with them on a few projects. They seem to be, you know, they're around. And I think all we'd have to do is kind of reach out to them and say, what do you, what do you have as an option? Because they seem to always have trees to give away, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's for downtown. Okay, so at this point, you've heard enough from me, I'm gonna step aside, and I'm gonna have each department go through and talk to you about the work plan. So this is a good opportunity if you have any questions or any thoughts, and also we'll help them develop what they're gonna bring back on the thirteenth and in April. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Espinosa.
Madam Mayor and Council, these are the remaining work plan items for the police department, and as I go through them, feel free to interrupt or stop me with questions. Majority of these are discretionary, and this is our feat to provide an enhanced level excellent customer service to our community. But some of these are mandated, like AB four-eight-one and our concealed carry weapon policy. And so these are ongoing on a yearly basis, but these two particularly, there was a ruling from Supreme Court last June, which in essence eliminated the good, good cause clause from our CCW application where really we try to vet those that are not suitable to have a concealed carry weapon permit. And so what we're doing now is the association of city attorneys proposed a best practice policy that we are looking to implement, and we're also looking at software that's easily gonna be able to track those CCW permits and ensure that only those that are vetted thoroughly are allowed to proceed in the process. And this is time-consuming, and historic, we, we've assigned those that have been out for an extended period of time on light duty, and we're gonna continue to do that as that capacity is freed. We came to you with AB four-eight-one last year, and we will again this May to give you an update on where we're at. And again, a lot of the listed equipment is listed as military equipment, but in reality is equipment that we've been using for years. Recently, we received a grant for forty-three thousand dollars from the Bureau of State Community Corrections that needs to be utilized to enhance or develop an employee wellness or resiliency program. And we pride ourselves on having a robust peer support team that we hope to use some of this funds to continue to support their efforts and build on that, and also bring awareness. And we all recognize that in order to retain those employees that we currently have and, with the hopes of attracting more to come, that we got to ensure that they stay healthy and are able to provide that service to the community. I spoke briefly about this last time we met, about conducting a community survey, and we're looking to explore a best practice. And I mentioned grassroots and really tailoring something to, similarly to what the youth task force had done in the, in the past that I had been part of too, and having small circles, circles where we get to hear from our community members and try to figure out and find out from them what it is that we're doing right and what it is that we could be doing better. And often, we only hear from our community members when they have a complaint. And so we want to make sure that we're proactive and that we tackle some of those concerns and readjust whatever we need to readjust to make sure that we're listening. Our community police academy was put on pause through COVID. We did have the opportunity to spark it back up last fall, and so we held it completely in Spanish. We weren't, the plan was to piggyback with English, but we weren't able to get the numbers. And so we pushed it out to quarter three of this year. So we're hoping that we are able to complete that. In the interim, in between, we were able to, to start the youth academy. And so this year, we completed the second youth academy, and it turned out to be a success with the whole intent is to garnering that interest and have some of our local youth potentially in the future look to careers in law enforcement. And so the next community academy will be this fall, and we're hoping to, to run that completely in English. And again, this is a discretionary level of service that is important to our department, is important to the community, and we hope to continue offering that. As we look to establish in a succession plan, it's important that we start to develop those that eventually are gonna replace us. And so last spring, we had two sergeants that took on this project, this committee, to implement a mentorship program. And so we hope that this coming year, in the first quarter, we're able to have something formalized so that we're able to, to follow it. And keep in mind that mentorship and development and succession planning is, is ongoing, but to get this up and running, we hope that this is accomplished in twenty-twenty-four, quarter one. We do have a, we did apply for another peace officer standards and training, team building workshop grant that was, that we, that we received, that needs to be used by June, so we hope. We just met with a consultant, and we hope that we use that time to, to develop some of this, these goals, these, these, this plan, this three-year plan that this project will be incorporated into. And piggybacking off of that will be our strategic plan for the next three years and strategic goals. Again, we will, we will be doing that during the third quarter of this year, and our team building workshop has been scheduled for late May. And so we're hoping to have some, something in place here by quarter three of this year. We spoke briefly about the South County Pilot Psychiatric Emergency Response Team, and mental health and behavioral health crisis calls for service continue to increase at a pretty alarming rate, and these pose a particularly challenge for our peace officers, that some of these calls for service are not criminal in nature. And so we try to navigate those calls as best we can, and we have been utilizing the services of the, of the emergency response team from behavioral health, crisis response team, I'm sorry. And they've been great. However, they're not twenty, a twenty-four-seven operation. So sometimes we're relegated to their business hours so that they could come out and take primary on some of these calls, where there's no threats of violence, or there hasn't been any weapon displayed or brandish. You know, certainly if that's the case where the, the initial facts that are, are shared that there's a weapon involved, where there's violence or the propensity for violence, then certainly we have to take primary with that. But we've utilized other tactics where we, we've had the clinician call before we even show up. And our feat to try to, try to mitigate and avoid a confrontation with someone that potentially wants to hurt themselves, and, and again, not a crime. Succession planning is particularly important during these next couple of years, and by virtue of our structured system, we, we start to prepare those below our, our rank. And our ranking system is corporal, sergeant, captain, and chief. And so the training starts at the corporal level, and we are preparing our corporals to eventually become sergeants and so on up until we find my replacement as well. But that is, we, we did have an influx of retirements about two years ago. We're anticipating at least three more this year. And so we have to make sure that we have those prepared to assume those positions and, and, and the movement is constant. And, and we have the less, less disruption of service for the community. And so having a succession plan is important. I, I spoke about the team building workshop and the grant, and we are, we have a committee too that will, will piggyback on the mentorship program to ensure that we have a plan in place once these sergeants and managers and supervisors start to retire. On the crime prevention, our neighborhood watch program, we have been referring people to the website. However, our goal is to have a dedicated person inside the department to start to move that program forward, make those community contacts, establish those meetings, and provide those resources so that the community members could be empowered and take this on as a community on their own. And so that is the, the, the programs that we didn't get to complete. Again, most of them are discretionary, and those discretionary goals are our effort to, to ensure that we provide the best service that we can to the community. And I'll take any questions on any of these items if you have them.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody? All right, next department. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the plans for the fire department. If I could have the slide, let's see. There we go, okay. So our first item, oops, did I go backwards? There we go, okay. Is to develop and implement the Santa Teresa temporary, and then eventually the permanent fire station. That's part of our core services. And so our timeframe, obviously, is in twenty-twenty-four, we, we want to see the temporary station fully operational. Council approved last year the location at Tenth Street and Deanza, and of course, it's pending the PG&E connection. We're still working with PG&E to find out a, a specific time that they can actually do it. There's been some holdbacks due to the, the severe weather that we went through earlier this year. So there's been some delays in that, but they're looking at fall later on this year. Then we also are looking at the, identify the funding for the Chestnut and Los Anas Station retrofit. Again, this is a core category. It's in progress, and we're looking at twenty-twenty-three Q-two. This will include, will be included in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget process. And this relates directly to the retrofit for earthquakes, current earthquake standards. These stations were built back in the mid-seventies where the earthquake standards were not as robust. robust. And there's also remodel to the actual stations themselves to, to bring them up to compliance to gender and privacy issues. Then, item three, develop and implement the plan for over-the-air mapping. Again, this is a core category, and it's pending. 2024 Q1 is what we're looking at. We received grant funding for new tablets that are compatible with the, the new CAD system. Once, once they're in service, once we receive them, purchase them, and put them into service, the over-the-air mapping feature will be implemented. Just a little bit of background on the over-the-air mapping. This not only allows us to have instantaneous mapping like you would have on your phone, but also provides additional information that helps the, the company officer and the incident commander on, on small and large-scale incidents, knowing where fire protection systems are located, hazardous materials, and other items for firefighting or information for firefighting. Then, the last item here, as far as what we're moving forward on, improving the RMS incident data reporting. Again, a core service, and it's pending 2024 Q1. This is where we're developing new tabs that capture additional incident data for RMS. RMS is our records management system. We, we purchased a new one about three years ago. It's, it is a device that, or it's a software that collects the data for us, but we're looking at, we've identified some software that can help us to analyze that data so we present better information to you on our service delivery and if we're meeting the SOC compliance for response times. But in addition to that, the software will also allow us to do a little bit more detailed analyzing of the types of calls that we respond to, the effectiveness once we arrive, and eventually breaking it out to the demographics on, for each and every district that we respond to. Let's see, last item here. So, again, you've heard it before, but this is the, to incorporate the county mobile discretionary crisis response team. We removed this primarily because we actually removed ourselves from the behavioral health study that we initiated about five years ago. Lack of county mental access facilities or mental health facilities and to accommodate our excessive patient load was probably the primary reason. We, we found that the county was not able to support the number of patients that we were delivering to those facilities. And then, delayed by the Senate Card County MSA to fully implement the countywide behavioral health alternative destination program. They're still in some revision even though they've received state approval. They have not initiated countywide, so that made us somewhat isolated in our abilities to provide the service. And then, the city has engaged with the county in providing more mental health and addiction services. But again, the fire department itself had to back away from, from moving forward on the program that we were initially participated in the study. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, oh, go ahead.
No, no, sorry.
Okay, Chief, I have a question.
Councilmember Marks.
All right, okay. Let's go back to the San Antonio Fire Station. I thought we were told that PG&E was going to hook it up in August, and then it would be functional. Did I misunderstand that night?
You didn't misunderstand that. We were looking at what they were stating that they would be able to provide, and as we started initiating the, the permit process, there were further delays that, that PG&E couldn't meet our timelines. So, and then, after the rains of late December and early January, with several communities that their infrastructure was basically destroyed, that put PG&E even further back. So, their best estimate for installing the, the electrical, which is the primary need that we have for them, is fall of this year.
So, when it gets installed then in the fall of this year, why are we still 10 months away from opening that station fully, fully staffed?
Yeah, so, once they install it, and that could take a couple of weeks to, or a month or longer, then we have, then we can start installing the other utility aspects for sewer and water, and then also do the, the site preparation, which could take another six weeks. That would put us right into winter, and we, we ran into this last time that once we hit the winter time period, the, the improvements that, the site improvements that we were hoping for were delayed because of the rains.
All right, stupid question. Why can't we do those other improvements now before PG&E gets put in so that we're ready to roll?
Yeah. Once we start, once PG&E puts in the, puts in their line, they've trinched it, and they put in the actual line, we can then pave over it. It doesn't make any sense for us to pave over it now and then have them tear up the actual preparation that we've, that we've initiated. And you can't put the trailer there until we actually know where the line's going to be.
All right. So, we have another year and a half where the west, west side of Gilroy is still underserved, especially when we have the apartments coming on, first in San Teresa, all the apartments next to Safeway, and then the, the new townhouses that just got approved.
Okay, that's not something Chief Wyatt can do anything about.
I know. I guess I'm dystopia. We all make a lot of noise what we can do to get this thing moving quicker. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I could hear it in your voice a little bit when you, when you talked about how you had to remove that behavioral health model that you guys were doing. You know, I, I just want to say, you know, kudos to your department for doing that. Sometimes you, you might have been a little earlier than the system was ready for you to receive those patients.
Correct.
But, you know, kudos for trying it and doing it. And I know that you, along with others too, have just been pushing for more services down here, more services, and, and you provided the data for that. So, not, 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 not work that, you know, will never be able to be sort of revived in the future if we expand. And, you know, and, and saying that, the COVID-19 response and the way you guys handled that with the mobile response, that was huge because that was something that you created and that you did, that you piloted and you, and you showed the region how we can get, you know, shots in those arms. So, kudos to you on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just add that we, by what we did, we actually changed the state law.
Yeah. Powerful. Good job.
The first and the second. All right. Are there any other questions of council?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Madaras.
Thank you. Chief, yeah, and thanks and appreciation, you know, for what you and your team do for our community. And it is, it's disappointing to hear, right, PG&E delaying this and, you know, when we have summertime coming up, we have new apartments and a lot more residents coming to the area that would be served. But my concern is about staffing levels. Do you think that within that time period, we'll be fully staffed or close, close to fully staffed in order to have that station up and running at the capacity that it should be?
So, we're, we're still working on that. I'll just say that we have 32 line firefighters right now. We just hired four more. We've got another hiring that's coming up at the end of this month. Our hope is, is that we get the full 38 that, that we need to, to staff the station, for sure.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, any others? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next department.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the community. So, here are the remaining items for community development department. The first one is the housing element, which you've been hearing about. We submitted our draft to HCD, the state agency, review and housing element on October 31st, got comments back on January 27th. We've been working on the revisions, and staff's plan is to continue to work through the revision in the next, you know, 20 to 30 days, and the goal is to bring that back to planning commission and council. And then, we'll send that to HCD. The annual general plan and housing element report, we've been working on gathering the information and organizing this, and we'll bring, bring that to you in two weeks. The intergo of land management system, this is the, essentially the new permitting system we've been trying to implement. We completed configuration last fall in coordination with the consultant. We've been conducting user acceptance testing, and this is, you know, the entire community development team as well as the engineering team from Public Works. We are about to wrap up the user acceptance testing phase, gave feedback to the consultant, so they'd be working on those updates. And the next phase after that will be moving into user training, and then we're going to look at prepping the system for going live around the middle of the calendar year. For zoning code update and the zoning map update for consistency with the adopted general plan, we have been reviewing the drafts from the consultant, making edits, and working closely with the city attorney's office. And there's two more articles. We've already reached out to the consultant for the drafts, and, you know, we'll continue this process, and the goal is to bring the final version to council this fall. Inclusion in housing and in new fee policy, you heard about this a little bit earlier. This is also in the council legislative agenda. This is one of the proposed program in the housing element, and we're working on an RFP for development of the inclusionary policy and the new fee study. And the plan is to issue this RFP this spring, and staff is estimating about a year for completion and bring this back next spring to council. Integrating GIS with the permitting system and increased GIS-based services, this is something we have been working on with our GIS consultant, also along with the consultant that's working on our permitting system. And the GIS analyst just started last week, and we'll be working with him to continue to facilitate the integration of the systems and also to increase, you know, GIS services so that citizens and residents will be able to see that online. Downtown specific plan, staff continues to see grant opportunities for this effort, and we just recently met with the High-Speed Rail Authority and VTA so we can better understand, you know, their plans for the transit station. And we'll be coordinating efforts with the High-Speed Rail Transit, Transit Area Station Plan and also coordinate the effort with the downtown parking management study also. The next two are, you know, kind of together, the VMT policy and the TDM measures. We've been collaborating with Public Works, and just recently, we submitted a draft to Caltrans for a grant opportunity. And as part of that application, we're proposing to do the climate action plan as well as TDM and VMT policy altogether. So, that's still in the works, and, and hopefully it will be successful, and that the grant will be able to cover actually multiple, you know, policy elements for the city. The customer service initiatives, we started that last year, and we just had to kind of prioritize our resources, and staff anticipates resuming this effort later this year in the fall. As far as the act mitigation policy, staff has been working with the city attorney's office, and we're considering some potential changes that can provide more flexibility in implementing this policy. For the mobile vending ordinance or policy, staff is conducting research, and our goal is to bring to council for discussion and to seek some council consideration and direction in, in the spring. For the permanent parklet, you heard about this a little bit earlier, it's kind of pending the results of the downtown manage, parking management plan, and then staff will be revisiting the parklet and the outdoor dining policies. And the climate action plan, I just mentioned that earlier, we're hoping, you know, as part of the Caltrans grant we're applying for, that will provide the grant funding for this work. To streamline permit, well, streamlining permitting, this initiative, we've been taking the approach to incorporate this as part of the zoning code update. So, for example, we're trying to consolidate all the zoning permits and the procedures into one article, you know, so it's more user-friendly and it'll be easier for applicants, you know, to look for that information and follow through with that information. So, staff's plans to bring this to the council this fall. The file digitization initiative due to just a department prioritization, you know, and this will, hopefully, we're hoping to resume this toward the end of next year. And this last one on the gourmet alley, we'll be consolidating this with the Public Works Initiative in their work plan item. So, Daryl will be talking about that next. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions of Sharon? No, okay, Public Works.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council, it's Public Works time. Got a few here for you. We'll start with the City Hall backup generator that's been sitting behind that wall for what seems like forever with our friends at PG&E. Can I hold this one up right now? We got our conduit in, we've got our connection, two connection points ready, but we still need to have some, some more work by PG&E done before we can complete the project. Hoping to have that done by what they're telling us by this month, March, and then construction completed this summer in June to actually have this building hooked up to backup power. So, when we do get the next big storm or whatever, we lose power, it's not just Pedro who has power next door, but we'll have power here too. So, our employees will have to stay and work this time, Jimmy, sorry. So, we're replacing our steel water service lines to improve our water quality throughout the city. We're halfway done with that. We replaced about 250 of those now. So, we have another 50 steel lines to replace with copper. So, that's planned out another 50 each year, so that's why that pushes us out to 2028 to get that completed. That's, we're doing that 100% by our own crews at this time. Some of it's in overtime to get the project done. Seventh and Eagleberry Parking Lot, most of you have seen that construction going on down the street. Unfortunately, we had to postpone the ribbon cutting due to weather, but we did get striping done this last week. So, we're just about ready to open that up for public use. So, hang in there. We'll be within a couple of weeks to open that up for, for y'all.
Daryl, can I ask a question?
You bet.
Regarding the parking lot, I'm not sure, or maybe Jimmy, one of the concerns I've been hearing from local businesses, the gates at the parking lot.
Yeah.
So, are we going to have hours of operation, or what are those gates actually for? So, I have business saying, well, if we're open till 10, 11, 12, are they going to close the gates on us?
We're not going to close the gates on them. They're just closed right now to keep folks out until we finish.
I just want to make sure there's anything.
Or if there's a special event and you want to close off one side or the other.
So, those gates won't be closed during?
That's correct.
Perfect. So, they'll stop yelling at me.
That's right. Okay. Our upgrade of residential fire hydrants, I think we're the biggest lag in this. We're pushing out to 2030. So, when Jimmy spoke to you about something that takes so long, 10 years, we're placing one of those each month. There's a lot of those throughout town that we keep upgrading each month. It just takes time. With our other priorities, that's how we've placed the priority of that happening. So, that's, again, once a month. And again, there's an impact to a community too when we take out a fire service because we have to shut down the water lines. Sometimes that's housing, sometimes that's commercial without water for a while. So, it kind of spreads out the pain a little bit too. So, that's been working well. Conduct our park trees assessment, that's a discretionary item for us. We've got it projected out for next year, 2024, end of that year. I think we can beat that, but that's what our consultant is telling us right now, so we'll stay on top of that for you. Development of a downtown parking management plan, Jimmy talked about that a little bit earlier, so we've consolidated that. You've heard about that already. We're reaching out to locals and the different business owners and the neighbors get their input before we finalize that.
Daryl, can I, yeah, on that. So, when we open the lot, are we going to have any kind of signage in there about parking restrictions?
Yes, we will. We'll have hours that you can't, when you can be there, when you can't be there.
Okay, we're not waiting for the parking, the management plan.
No, no, we're not. We're going to put something in there so if Pedro needs to move certain people out there, he'll have the ability to do that.
Be able to tow and whatever you need to do. Okay, great, thank you.
Exactly. We don't want that as an all-night overnight thing.
No, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good point. Climate action benchmarks, that's also been consolidated with community development. She spoke about that earlier. Question on that?
Oh, no, no, next one.
Yeah, next one. Support project for Activate Gourmet Alley. We've been working on that project. We have 50% design plans right now that we're reviewing and engineering right now, and we're developing other options so we can bring those to you folks in the near future to get some final input before we go to construction. Question?
Question. So, in Question, so, and thank you for that, I appreciate the update. But it's my understanding that that project needs to be completed by when of next year?
Summer of next year, fall of next year?
Fall of next year. Given where we're at, are we gonna have enough time for that to happen?
We're currently on schedule on how we've projected the whole project.
Because if we fall behind, we lose the money, correct?
That's correct.
I trust, I trust.
So we'll be calling you if we need any extra help. That's right. So, yeah, we look forward to bringing that to you guys to see what they, what they're up to, the different furniture they have out there, some awnings they have out there, some covers and sort of vegetation. There's a lot of neat design elements that I think you guys are gonna like when you see that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and lastly, development of our permanent parklet policy, again, that's with CD and E, they're really the driver on that, we're there to support them with any help they need, so. Any questions? Yes?
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So going back to the parklet, so I attended the workshop last week regarding parking management.
Yeah.
And it was interesting because from what I got out of it was they said that we have plenty of parking downtown, right? So when we talk about the parklets, and I think that wherever the parking management leads us, that's gonna sort of dictate that sort of topic there, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be neat to see how that actually comes in and what it looks like.
Yeah, because I was just, I did ask that question, obviously, and I think the consultant said that obviously parklets bring business to downtown. So, which was great to hear, so I'm hoping that that comes out of it because they gave a percentage of the number of businesses that kind of, you know, you know, the number of businesses or people that go downtown with a parklet, so. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Daryl.
Good evening, Council.
Members of the community. I'm gonna talk about Administrative Services Department, which is comprised of human resources, facilities and fleet. So there was just a couple items that we did not get to that were, we kind of had them as below the line in the work plan document because we weren't sure that we would have the time to get to them in this last work plan, so we're gonna carry them forward. One is the update to the HR rules and regulations, which is a core item that we definitely want to spend some time on. It's a time-consuming project and we've just had a lot of other priorities that we've had to put our staff time to. But it's still on our list and we still want to get it completed. The next is our performance management system. Again, we wanna continue our work on this and streamline our process and make it easy for our managers and supervisors to complete our performance management program. And so we're gonna continue to work on this and keep it on the work plan as a core item for, in this, in this update that we're doing now. And then with fleets, we, as you know, we purchased two type one fire engines using the lease-to-own model. Those engines have been received here at the city of Gilroy. And right now, we're evaluating options for purchasing a type three engine that was on our, in our budget for fiscal year 23. And if we're able to do a tag-on bid or find a way to secure that, we're gonna bring that to you before the end of this fiscal year. In facilities, we're removing, in the process of removing the arbor at Wheeler, so that's happening right now, actually. And then lastly, as you know, this sad HVAC project, it's just a sad project. And so it got put on hold because of the $6.8 million price tag and we only had $3 million budgeted for that. So we're still, you know, checking the open market, but it's gonna have to be looked at as a part of the fiscal year 25 and, or 24 and 25 budget process and figure out what we're gonna do in maintaining this building or possibly looking for future longer-term plans. In addition, we're doing some remediation work at our police shooting range. We've initiated the selection of a contractor and that's gonna be completed by the end of April and then the work will be completed by the end of June. We're, as you know, council approved our solar power project. And so we're expecting work to begin in the second quarter of fiscal year 23 and project completion in the fourth quarter. And then lastly, we're doing some upgraded safety labeling and we're getting quotes right now and that's gonna be completed in the first quarter of 23. And that's it for administrative services and we have some things on the completed list, which you'll hear from all the departments, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, anyone? All right, seeing none, move on to finance. Thanks, Leanne.
Evening again, Mayor, Councilmembers, for Jeth, I'll be presenting you the finance department updates, this also includes the information technology. The first item there for finance is the update of fees and charges, which is a core item for us. Our timeframe to complete this process is quarter three of the current 2023 year. You'll recall in July of 2022, we updated the citywide user fee schedule, which was the bulk of this project. And the remaining piece is conducting the utility rate study to implement new water and wastewater rates. We're planning to come before you in April to introduce the study, talk about the master plans and what projects are needed and with the hopes of conducting the Prop 218 process and have the new rates implemented by July of this, this year. The next item on there is identifying funding options for unfunded infrastructure, sort of discretionary, but this is going to kind of take priority, especially as we are in the current budget development process. We have identified funding for projects like the downtown gourmet parking lot. We have identified funding for the five-year street maintenance program, we'll be looking at funding the next two years on that program as well. And the program is ongoing in nature, so as we identify, you know, options either through existing fund balance or financing and so forth, you know, we'll be bringing those forward to you. Again, budget development will include additional funding options for infrastructure-related projects. And then funding for other larger projects will be identified in the upcoming fire year capital improvement program, which will also be coming before you soon. Other work plan items, we had a discretionary item for over-the-top franchise, top franchise fees. We're recommending this item be removed, we did some preliminary homework. This was essentially to assess if video streaming services like Netflix, Hulu would be the subject to cities' utilities or franchise-related fees. And doing some research and other cities, larger cities have attempted this already and have not had success. And courts have ruled in favor of the streaming service providers that they are exempt because they do not own or operate infrastructure on the public right of way. So we're recommending we do not do any further work on this and it be removed. The next item you have there is for information technology, which is a core item for the land management system. This is consistent with the community development department. The configuration is complete, the IT team is supporting the department in conducting the user acceptance training and we're expecting the system to be live by summer of 2023. The next item for IT is also a core item, which is the citywide desktop replacement item. We're expecting that project to be complete by 2023 Q2. We have received the last fleet of the computers, we're expecting to deploy them by April of 2023. It does require, once we receive them, program them, get them ready with the city's applications and systems and copy over the end-user data to the machines before they can be deployed. The last item there, you see for the IT team is the Wi-Fi replacement, it is a core item, it is in the pending status as we're currently recruiting for the ID manager position as well as we'll be recruiting for the network administrator position, which are really the professionals, you know, needed to assess the Wi-Fi network. You know, I can do all things finance, but I don't think you want me assessing the Wi-Fi network capabilities. So for those reasons, we're gonna let the experts come in and assess and make recommendations on the software and the hardware to prepare. That concludes the finance updates, including IT, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one, when you do the citywide desktop replacement, can the mayor's office get one of the old ones? There's nothing in there. Think about that, Jimmy.
Sure.
There's no desktop, yeah, I'm operating with nothing, all right, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So for the administration department, our first item is implementation of the homeless ad hoc committee recommendations. This item is being removed, it's the broad, broad category. Each of the recommendations have been broken out as its own item now and the work plans and accomplishments, which we discuss later. The next one is develop the city logo policy, this item is pending. We want to implement the social media policy and see how the protections in that policy are affecting the use of the logo and that, those particular media channels. And so the communication engagement office will now work on this policy and is anticipated to be complete within the year. The next item is completing the Emergency Operations Center Operations Plan. That plan is currently in production and we anticipate to bring that back to council by the end of the fiscal year, so in June. We also are currently in recruitment for the residency coordinator as a grant funding from CalOES for nearly a million dollars for a five-year position. They'll also be helping to implement that plan once it's adopted by council. The next one is developing the community engagement plan for PG&E power outages. Staff has removed this item, so PG&E has made many changes over the past two years. They've lessened the number and frequency of the shut-offs, they've improved their notifications and inspections are faster to reactivate the lines. I believe last year was only one public safety power shut-off that occurred. Staff does attend meetings with PG&E quarterly and so based on the number of the public safety shut-offs being minimal as far as impact, we're gonna remove this from the work plan, but we will still be attending those meetings on an ongoing basis. Next is the development process for the film permits, and this is discretionary item. Draft application forms have been completed, they're being transitioned right now to fillable formats for use. The next step after that is to bring a fee proposal to council for consideration. Once that fee, once that fee is adopted, then the item will be trained to council, I'm sorry, for the fee, and then it will be ready to go at that point. The next item is earned media strategy, this was a way to induce articles in media to get exposure without having to pay for it. However, as we looked at a potential strategy to start, we're just not seeing it's gonna perceive, there's not a perceived add value for us to offset the investment of staff time to see it through, so we're pulling that one off the work plan. Next is the downtown facade program, that's consolidated with the downtown committee recommendations, is actually a completed project as that program is underway currently and available. And that completes the presentation, administration, if there's any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Council? No, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna finish up here and talk about the fun stuff, which is the completed items. We have four pages here and as much as I would like to read every single one of them and talk about them, I won't do that to you. But there's a lot of green here, which is a lot of things that we talked about two years ago that did get done, that had a lot of success, including some very large projects that aren't very high-profile. The enterprise resource planning took up a lot of Saturdays and Sundays for a lot of our departments and, you know, a lot of things like that that don't really jump out at you but keep things going and such. So this is, this is, certainly we'll know a lot of these, but you know, it's kind of like, what have you done for me lately? And so we're gonna say goodbye to these ones that we got done. And the, the next step for us will be the March 13th strategic planning meeting. And so all the screen and area will, you'll no longer see again, but you'll now see the ones that were, you're in progress or are pending. Those will become part of the fiscal year 24, 25 work plan. And then we will also combine that with the 12 items that you gave us in January. Again, we never had you vote on it, we never asked you much more than what's your idea, so we'll next bring that to you and your ideas and we'll prioritize that within our own work plan because what you're gonna see is what we add from the departments are the mandatory items. And those are the things we have to do, and so if we do have discretionary, you may have to, you know, work through that and see if there's a discretionary item you want to get finished, how do we accomplish that as a group when we're prioritizing? And so the very end result will be new legislative agenda, department work plans, and then once we get those finalized at the, primarily at the March 13th meeting, we'll build the budget around that. So the only way work gets done is if we allocate resources, and in our case, it's mostly money, that's how we do that. So we will not be bringing in a lot of positions because we don't have the, the ability to add a lot of staff. But one thing we've been very successful in the last couple of years is projects, one-time investments in the community that really have benefited everybody and you're seeing them go up around town. So that concludes the overall presentation, I really wanna thank Bryce, Bryce, Bryce is kind of the brains behind all this and he keeps us all on track and he doesn't get all that credit he should, but I really wanna thank Bryce for putting this all together and really listening to council too, so. Yeah, so I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you. Was the Jedi policy on the completed list? I could read fast, but not that fast.
It is not, it's on the additional list that council added throughout the year and we'll talk about that on the 13th, but that is in progress. And by in progress, I mean that we've had, hired the consultant, we've had our first meeting just a few days ago. And so we are well on our way, we'll give council periodic updates about where we're at in that process.
Thank you, that'd be helpful.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, can we go back to the downtown, the presentation on downtown projects? So, you know, I didn't ask him earlier because I was going through my notes, so way, way back when, when I kind of proposed the thought, the idea of the lighting and thank you to the other committee members and council, I had shared that, I envisioned something like downtown San Diego or downtown Long Beach where they had the lighting go across, you know, back and forth downtown, up over, not just in the light, not in the trees, but going across, very similar to this here. I don't know if you can see it. And that's not what I heard, I heard that, you know, we're gonna put them in the trees, but we talked about reaching out to Alpine to see if they could, you know, we could planners, you know, whatever it may be, poles, whatever we needed to sort of go over or across. Because the whole idea behind it was to create something that's pretty attractive and sort of the talk of the town. It's different than the city, you know, on the other side over there, but something that was gonna be unique to our downtown. And I thought that's where we were headed with that, but it didn't sound like that's what you have in mind.
Well, what we're doing is, none of it's really what I had in mind, we worked very closely with the GDBA and that's what they identified as their top priority and lighting is what we've heard from many of our community partners. Now, whether you go across the street or up the trees, I mean, that's, that's up to.
You know, on that committee, we never talked about it going across the streets, Fred. I don't remember that conversation at all. We talked about lighting, but we never got really detailed in what we were going, what we were proposing.
Well, well, that's, well, that's not, that's why I used both San Diego and Long Beach as an example. But second part of that, that's fine, I mean, that's where the council wants to go. You've mentioned the GDBA again, help me understand sort of where that came around because I don't remember us having that discussion that we were gonna rely on the GDBA to get these projects moving forward. So am I missing something here? I heard that, you know, we're waiting to work with the GDBA to possibly put a stage, we're working with them on the lighting. I didn't know that we were relying on the GDBA to get this.
I remember the conversation that Jimmy offered $100,000 for downtown improvements and the downtown business association was going to have input into how it was going to be spent since they represent all of the downtown businesses.
They were gonna have input, right? I mean, are they holding up the projects, is that, I'm trying to get an idea.
No, no.
Is this the place for the, I'm just asking if this is the place for this discussion? This is the work plan? And is this something, Jimmy, if you think this is the place for this discussion and you're able to handle it, that's fine. Otherwise, push it to mark, bring it up March 13th at the study session, because this is just the work plan. This isn't the specifics of what the lighting is going to be.
But I would like to support Councilmember Tovar in that if it's not gonna be a discussion tonight, that it is a discussion that's brought back to this council to make on the 13th.
It actually, yeah, I don't.
Is it?
It is pertinent to the work plan, right? Because it seems there, there seems to be like a pause in the work, right, so.
Well, I think as council, you're deciding that that's the policy you have. So you gave $100,000 to downtown improvements. At what level you wanna be involved in allocating that money is your decision, but that wasn't the direction I was given.
Exactly, that's the point.
I'd like to support Councilmember Tovar and see him go across the street.
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, that's why I use, and I'm sorry Carol doesn't remember this, you know, but that's why I specifically use San Diego and Long Beach over and over and over, going across.
Yeah, I think we should probably bring this back because we are getting into too much detail.
Okay, so hearing this, this makes this difficult for me to do my job at this point because I have hired someone to trim trees, I have purchased lights because council gave me direction to use $100,000 for beautification, getting input from our community partners, that's what I did. So do I stop?
No, please don't.
No, I'm not saying stop, but Carol.
This is just a surprise that this is coming up now, is all.
Well, it's a surprise that, that we're going in the direction that I thought we were, we weren't going into. I thought we were going over the top, not just on trees, so this is a surprise to me too.
No, I mean, this is the direction that we gave Jimmy to do. And the downtown businesses, you know, did come up with the idea of the trees and it was talked about amongst them. And since they had the input and since they're the ones who are downtown, have to look at it all the time and what they thought was best.
Carol, so I'm sorry, who, okay, just last meeting, I heard that unintentionally, our Hispanic downtown businesses have been ignored, right? I don't think it was unintentionally, but what I'm saying is, that was the initial discussion and reason why I brought this forward. Because I wanted something different.
No, the downtown business association met with all of the Hispanic businesses and they had a great success. they had a great success, full turnout. So I don't know who told you that, but that was incorrect. I think we need to discuss this in greater detail with some of the businesses downtown because they have never had the intention of those lights going across from one side to the other.
No, they didn't. They never had it.
Well, the council never talked about it either.
It's the first I've heard of it.
It's the first I've heard of it, too. And I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
I'm sure it would cost a lot more than $100,000 to put them over the street.
So, you know, you might have assumed that, but we never discussed it.
Okay. It is the first I'm hearing of it. It doesn't mean it's a bad idea. It's just, I'm just surprised at the timing of this under this agenda item, that's all. So Jimmy, how, I don't, I don't know what to say if you've already gone forward under the direction that you had. I do not recall council directing you to come back with a design of how the lights were going to be downtown. So that's kind of where we are.
Well, I think the reason why the $100,000 was set at that limit is because that's within my authority.
Exactly. I know.
I'd plan to continue with what I had implemented. You know, that is within my authority. I don't, you know, so I'll continue to do that. And then if there's a, if there is a recommendation from council, they want to see lights go across, we can look at that as a separate project. But I do agree with Mr. Brocko. I think that is considerably more than $100,000, which would require council approval to do so.
Okay. So thank you, councilmember Tovar, for raising it. Councilmember Hilton supports the, the design. So maybe it can be, it can come up again at March 13, and you'll be prepared that they might bring it up.
Can we formally motion for that? Or does it have to be motioned?
I think it would be a future.
For the 13th? Yeah, it would be, it would be a future direction for the 13th if this.
But the 13th is wide open to anything. So I think that we can bring it.
Yeah, I don't think, I think you can raise it without formally asking for it to be raised on the 13th.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And the second part of my question, Jimmy, is regards to the Papa Park. And again, when I brought that up initially, it was sort of to get that project up and running. But you mentioned that you guys are working with the GDBA on this. So where is, what's, what's the input from the GDBA? And what's the process in regards to next steps?
Well, the input from them is that they do their music series, and they would like to consider that location, the Papa Park in between the Arts Center and the old Portella's building, as a place they can put a stage as the entrance into that event. So that's what we're discussing.
Okay. So it's not going to hinder the process of getting the project up and running?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If councils have any more questions, I'd like to go to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker, and that's Ron Kirkish.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. First of all, this is awesome. These, these are goals and objectives. These are things that as a semiconductor engineer, I had to do every six months, goals and objectives and update and stuff. So, and it's got, like you requested, Fred, what are due dates and stuff. So this is very awesome. But it's also good for the community because it, it highlights what the city is doing. It gives it like the, like the fire plugs and stuff like that. It gives us a view of, hey, there is something going on. They're doing this, and it's going to take this long because of this and this and this. So this is, it really is good to highlight this kind of stuff. And Jimmy, you did a good job. Bryson, you did an awesome job. And the rest of you did a very good job, too.
Thank you. And it's very much appreciated from my view, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one more speaker. That's Maria Wilar.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. You know, the meeting that we have with Jeff Orth, a lot of the businesses were not in that core that you're talking about. And so it bothers me, and I realize you're only going third to seven, but what about all those other little businesses? Little mom and pops that depend on, you know, clients. And so if you're trying to bring in more people into the city, I think that you need to look at them all the way to First Street, all the way to 10th Street, to be able to bring in tourism. So I think that you should not be just taking all the money to Gourmet Alley and then the $100,000 plus the other $100,000 all in that one little pocket. I don't think that's fair to all of our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, are there any others?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Closing public comment. This is not a voting thing. This is just, yeah, we accept the, receives a report and prepare for next Monday. Okay, next item, item 12, city administrators' reports.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. City attorneys' reports?
No report.
Okay. Then, Jolie, would you like to read the lingo for closed session?
This is going to be the public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957 and Gilroy City Code 178.11. It is, the employee name is Jimmy Forbes, city administrator. And I'll just remind you that when you go into this closed session, you should vote to continue in the closed session. And at the end of the closed session, report any action taken and the vote.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to ask if there's any public comment for this?
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes. Is that a good tie?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Everybody be back at 8:26, please, and we'll resume.